City Council Public Hearing will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Repoza?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
And President La Libde LeBeau?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counsel Repoza, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Denilson de Freitas, Januar, DBA D&amp;M Junk Collector, 889 Grinnell Street, Fall River, Mass, for permission to operate as a junk collector and operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 889 Grinnell Street. Used vehicles to be sold. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Any proponents wishing to speak? You're a proponent if you would like to come down and speak? Could you just go to the table and give your name and address for the record, please? The table.
Denilson de Freitas, Januar.
If you sit down, sir, and speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you, thank you.
Denilson de Freitas, Januar, my address is 889 Grinnell Street, Fall River.
Did you want to speak as a proponent?
I speak Portuguese.
It's okay.
Okay.
We have a translator on seat two.
Oh, thank you. I pedi para abrir uma companhia para mim. Eu trabalho puxando carros. Eu compro um carro e pego esse carro e levo para o junk. Quando eu comecei a trabalhar com isso, eu não sabia direito porque eu fiquei sem trabalhar e achei essa opção para começar a trabalhar. Como eu queria fazer as coisas certas, pagando os impostos, tudo bonitinho porque eu sei que se não fizer assim poderia me dar algum problema, mas eu não sabia direito como fazer. Estava começando. Eu cheguei a levar alguns carros para minha casa, parar na porta da minha casa, até quando foi, isso já tem uns dois meses mais ou menos, até quando foi um policial lá e falou que eu não poderia fazer aquilo, que eu tinha que trabalhar certo, que eu tinha que ter uma licença. Foi quando eu vim até a prefeitura e comecei todo o processo para poder abrir essa companhia.
A companhia, o que é que faz? Vendo os carros?
Então, eu compro pelo sites, eu compro carros velhos e vendo. E aí eu tiro bateria e tiro alguns catalisadores.
Okay. São todos carros. So basically, he wants to start a company where he's buying cars and junking them, taking out the pots from them, and he was bringing them to his house before, and he didn't realize that he wanted, he needed to have a license and do it the right way and pay taxes. So he's here for that purpose, to get a license so that he can continue his business that he just started of buying junk cars and taking them to the, not just auction, taking to the junkyard pretty much. He takes them apart and gets rid of the waste and junks them. That's pretty much the nature of his business. Okay, muito obrigado.
Só mais uma coisa, eu até fiquei um pouco assustado porque quando eu fui abrir a companhia, a pessoa que assinou para mim, liberando como eu podia abrir a companhia, eu até falei com ela que eu já tinha tido alguns problemas com meus vizinhos por ter deixado alguns carros lá na rua, que aí eles falaram comigo que não era para deixar lá, até o policial me falou isso. E quando eu abri a companhia, eu só pedi para deixar esse endereço que é o da minha casa, porque é o único endereço que eu tenho. E quando eu chego uma carta para mim, eu vi nessa carta falando que lá ia ser um depósito de carros e não vai ser isso.
Yeah, no problem. Alright, so he basically, that's what he wants to do, he's here to get a license so he can junk cars and store them there and then get rid of them. Okay, obrigado.
Thank you.
Obrigado.
Yep, obrigado.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Kamara.
No problem.
Any opponents wishing to speak? Any opponents? One at a time, if you come to the table, give your name and address for the record.
You're not going to need a translator, correct?
You might have to translate me, I don't know, I speak Portuguese, so. You might understand. My name is Alan Aruda, 869 Grinnell Street, Fall River, Mass. I've been a resident there probably 20 years. And let me start off with saying I don't mind someone making a living, that's fine. But it's a dead-end street with a lot of kids. There've been trailers, people backing them in, backing them out, cut, taking cars apart on the street. His driveway is very narrow, I don't know how he's going to be able to back the trailers down there with cars parked, people had their driveways blocked. My wife has a gouge on the side of her car, right even with the trailer, I cannot prove it, I spoke to the gentleman before. And if he gets a license, I don't think that's going to improve. It's a residential street, the houses have all been fixed up, everybody tries to keep up with it. And I just don't think it's going to add anything to the neighborhood. So that's just my opinion, but I'm sure other people want to speak too.
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Give your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Aruda, 869 Grinnell Street. There's been plenty of incidences where they're actually doing welding on the street without any welding curtains or anything. Have little kids, they don't know not to look at the like that's going on. I have pictures of the parking spots with giant oil stains and we're constantly picking up pieces of metal so that we don't get our tires. The other day, like the other man mentioned, the driveway is very narrow, he had to have his trailer parked across the road and he used a cable in to pull the car out. And there was a woman on the end, she probably sat there for a good 10 minutes before she could even leave the street because of what was going on. You get incidences where some of his workers aren't very experienced with driving trailers and we're constantly having to allow him to stop because it's very close to hitting cars. And I'm just worried about too, the environmental thing with all the chemicals. Where's all the oil going? All these pots? I mean, we've seen them grinding on the street and the spots are going all over, nothing's getting, I mean, I'm a welder by trade and before I do anything, I have to have the area blocked off. You're not supposed to weld without having curtains up because you're supposed to protect other people. And if this has been going on now, if you give them the go-ahead, it's going to be 10 times worse, it's going to be more traffic on the street. Half the time, there was one point where there was two trailers parked, a car with no license plate on it, and then his truck, my wife came home, she had to park on the other street and walk at night in the dark. I mean, and I know there's other neighbors that are going to say the same thing. It's dangerous, it's just, it's too small of a street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak? You give your name and address, please.
Alyssa Daly, I'm property owner of 880 Grinnell Street. So I second pretty much everything that they said, other than, so there is little kids that live across the street as well. There's tools left on the street, there's, the biggest thing that they're doing that I've noticed is switching plates. So they're saying that they're using these vehicles, the police are aware, I have contacted them. They're taking different vehicles, putting different plates, and I literally have a video of it. I called the police, they addressed the issue right then and there. He said that he wouldn't do it no more, he didn't know, and, but it was on three different vehicles, literally within 30 minutes. Went from like a truck to a different car, and that's what they're doing, is they're just switching plates and driving the vehicles away. We've witnessed, I want to say, like, other than tools being left there, there's no parking on the street whatsoever. You know, I have a lot of tenants here as well, and there, no parking for them. It is a very, very small street, you can't even go down to the end of the street and turn around, you actually have to like pull into, excuse me, somebody's driveway and to turn around on the street, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Grinnell Street, but if there's cars parked over there, there's going to be no way of anybody to pull out. You know, dump trucks, they obviously back up into the street, like, they can't even, they complain constantly that there's the trailers with no plates blocking the street, blocking driveways, and it's just, it's more than just the little leaving the stuff and, you know, all of that, it's just there's no room for any of these vehicles down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President, did you have a question?
Yeah, excuse me.
Just one second.
So while people were speaking, I went on Patriot Properties. Doesn't appear there are any businesses on Grinnell Street.
No, ma'am.
There are no businesses?
No, ma'am.
So I guess the first question would be, what is that neighborhood rate, is it an R8, an R6? Is it zone business, not zone business? Because it sounds like he wants to have a business in his, on his, in his home, on his own property. I guess those are my first concerns.
The zoning.
And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you.
Real quick, so on that too, I did speak to a woman, I cannot remember her name for the life of me, but regarding the end of the street where they park most of the vehicles, they have like four lined up, and I want to say, she said something about an easement, I'm not really sure, because one person told me that there was an easement, then there was no easement, there was a private way on like, literally like an inch of the end of the street, so like, they were trying to figure all that as well with the police department, and they still can't figure it out, so they obviously told me to come here and we'll figure it all out together. But they, even with an easement, if they did have that small spot of a private property, it's not enough for the vehicles they have because it's also, as the woman was saying that, it's split. So it'd be for the house on the side and the house for them, leaving them a position for one vehicle. But there's so much traffic going up and down the road now with people like coming in and out and for that apartment, and it's just, there's just no room, there's no room for any vehicles on that street. So I don't know too with the easement or anything like that, if that has anything to do with it, but it's not a private way. And that's what they keep on saying, it's a private way, it's not, it's a dead end, but it's not a private way.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have a note on this?
Yes, I just want to mention that the building inspector signed the application, but his note says it's okay for office only. No cars are to be stored on the site.
Thank you.
So he wouldn't be able to bring cars and take them apart, keep the parts in, okay. So I think we have our answer.
Is at least five cars on his property right now?
Thank you.
In the backyard.
Madam Clerk, do you know if that was related to the gentleman, the applicant? Do you know if that note from the building inspector was related to the applicant?
Oh yes, this is on the application. This is, first of, there's no license on the property now, so there should be no business operating there. So this is the application that the applicant delivered to our office.
Okay.
So yes, he brought this to us, this was on the application when he brought it to our office.
Thank you. Any more opponents wishing to speak?
You can go right on his Facebook page and see the cars on the front.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor in seat two, did you have your hand raised?
No. So Madam Clerk, basically the license, if he does get a license, it's going to have to have an office inside his house to conduct the business.
That's all.
Okay.
No car work. Doesn't sound like it's zoned properly for it.
Okay.
Motion to close hearing.
Motion to close hearing. Seconded by Counsel Kilby. Seconded by Counsel Vice President Deon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is an auto repair shop, do we have a motion to open?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to open made by Counsel Repoza, seconded by Counsel Vice President Deon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Jonathan Manchester, 398 Kennedy Street, Fall River, DBA Manchester Automotive, for a license to operate an auto repair shop at 45 Dover Street on Lot B-21-4 on the assessors' plan. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Any proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
I'm sorry, but Counselor in seat seven.
Yeah, so similar to the before situation, 45 Dover Street is a house. So is this?
Madam Clerk?
I can answer this one too.
Thank you.
The order was prepared incorrectly.
Okay.
The address of the auto repair shop is actually 67 K Street. There was a previous license there which lapsed only recently. The advertisement for 45 Dover Street is actually the property owner's address. So when the advertisement was prepared by the office, it's prepared incorrectly. So this will be re-advertized and the public hearing will be held on July 12.
Okay, what's the actual address of the?
67 K Street.
K, K, Washington?
Yes.
And did you say there was an automotive shop at 67 K Street prior?
Yes, there's been a license there for a number of years. It only expired within the last month or so.
Madam Clerk?
But it did in fact expire, so this gentleman had to file for an initial license.
If you have to re-advertise, do we need to give this leave to withdraw when we get to full council and redo it?
When we get to it, we grant this one leave to withdraw.
Thank you.
Aye, y'all, thank you.
Do we have a motion to close? Oh, does anyone else have a question? Motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Repoza, seconded by Counsel Vice President Deon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Some moved, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Next.
Motion to adjourn. The public hearing is made by Counsel Repoza, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk? Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Repoza?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
President La Libde LeBeau?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input. Madam Clerk, do you have citizens' input?
First President to speak is Richard Barlow. Address is 50 Anderson Street, and the subject is mini splits. Mr. Barlow, when you're ready, all three minutes.
Good afternoon, Counsel, Counsel President. I'll try to get this in in three minutes, I doubt I will, but I'll get as much as I can. I gave you each a copy of these mini splits, and this is mainly for our fire stations. We have four stations that are using window units. If you look at that first page, that's just very high-end, that's a three-ton unit, 36,000 BTUs. That's a double zone. We could probably just put single zones in most of the stations, which will probably save another $1,000. But as you can see, that unit right there is a DIY kit. You don't have to have a plumber come in and install it. Any one of you can install a system. They're very easy to install. I'm very familiar with these systems because I used them plenty of times. The only thing is we have to bring an electrician in to wire it up, and that's it. But for a big savings, a quick solution for these men and women who go out and fight a fire, come back sweating, to be nice and cool or comfortable in their living quarters, I think it's a very inexpensive way to go. For all four stations, it'd be probably less than $20,000. I think the administration can come up with $20,000 for the four stations. I think it's a very inexpensive way to solve a problem that so many stations have. I know one station, a few years ago, their unit broke, they took the money out of their own pocket to pay for a unit, but unfortunately, that unit failed. So now they're using a used unit which is inefficient for the station. So I'd like to see this administration maybe spend the money. I also gave you some comparisons with a non-DIY kit, and you can see the big difference in it when you go into a big major brand name on one of the pages, and, you know, $5,000, and the other one is over $5,000. So for the best bang for your buck, this unit here, like I said, a DIY kit, anybody can install it. The men themselves will probably install it, they'll be probably that happy to install it. We could probably get a volunteer electrician in to hook them up if worst comes to worst. And if the administration doesn't want to do it, then I'll go beyond my means and have fundraisers to raise this money for these men. I think they deserve it, I think they need it. So I'd appreciate, you know, the support from this council to maybe push the administration into purchasing these units for these men and women. Anybody have any questions? I'd be more than glad to answer one.
Thank you. I can tell you, Mr. Barlow, that the AC, the heating and AC, is on a list of items that were requested when they sent items to the ARPA committee. That being said, they should have those and they should be working appropriately. I know one station in particular has been an issue on Eastern Ave. I know some of the counselors like to speak. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington?
So what are the life expectancies? I think this is more than reasonable. What are the life expectancies of these units?
These units have a very good warranty with this company here. The warranty is very long on them. And what's nice about these units is they're very easy to disconnect, move them. So I know they're talking about replacing the Stanley Street station, so worst comes to worst, they knock the station down, you disconnect the unit, you can put it someplace else. It's not something that's going to go to waste. I mean, we do waste a lot of stuff in the city, but it's something that can be used in other places. But not maybe just for this, you know, just for our fire station, but, you know, these units can be used in numerous places, not just this brand, but, I mean, this is the only brand that I know of that makes a DIY kit, that our own guys can hook up themselves.
Yeah.
Except like I said, like the electrical work, if somebody has to come in and do it.
So you were saying earlier there are four stations?
From what I understand, there's four stations who have window units. I mean, the chief can probably speak a bit more than I can, but from, you know, talking to a lot of these guys, I mean, some of you know I've been supporting these fire departments for years, and so I do talk to a lot of guys. And from what I found out is there's four stations with window units.
Yeah, we can do better than that.
And one station is, as Counsel President said, on Eastern Ave, it needs work. It definitely needs work. So for a quick, cheap solution, I think it's a no-brainer really to get these units up and going. We can put them in very quick and, you know, keep these guys comfort. This weekend was very hot, I'm pretty sure a lot of those guys were, had a tough time sleeping, especially with window units. I mean, I don't know how many of you have window units. It's much easier to sleep with these, they're very quiet, you don't hear nothing when they're running.
So?
And very energy efficient.
One unit would suffice the entire building or just the sleeping quarters?
Well, no, not the entire building, it would do that, living quarters. So this here is a dual zone, so we'll do two zones if you want. So it would do maybe their living, you know, their living quarters and maybe their lunchroom, whatever you may call it. I just went to a higher unit just to show, but they do make a one-head unit, a one-zone unit, which is like $1,000 cheaper.
Well, I think that this is very reasonable. I'm just wondering if it's enough. I guess my question is, is that enough? Do they, you know?
Well, this is a three-ton unit, so I think a three-ton unit will satisfy any living quarters, you know, to remove these window AC units and putting these units in. And like I said, these do do heat, and they will heat to below zero degrees. So they will work through most of the winter, and I think will save the taxpayers a lot of money in the long run, as far as energy goes.
Thank you, I yield. Thank you. Counselor in seat five, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Okay. I'm familiar with the type of units. I got one in my house. But there's no way you're going to put one on Bedford Street to cool the whole place off. No way.
No, these are mainly just for their living quarters that are using window ACs.
All right, you go around there all over. You got a guy like Andrews, he's got three of them to cool that place off. And some of these stations are big. I mean, you know, how many do you need? You can get three wall mounts on one, that's okay too. I mean, if it's going to work, I mean, the prices you got to hear. My daughter paid $10,000 for three rooms on the same unit, and...
Right, these will do two units.
Two. But to say you're going to cool off the whole station, you couldn't do it with one, there's no way. No way. But it's good to look into it.
No, like I said, this was mainly for their living quarters.
Their living quarter, okay.
That's what their main thing is, because that's what they're using for their main living quarters now is window air conditioners.
Yeah, and this is cheap on the electric.
These are very energy efficient. This unit here is a 21 and 1/2 SEA, so it's one of the higher energy efficient units out there. And since it's an energy star, maybe we can get rebates on them.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people are putting them in, it's worth putting them in.
Well, the new units are very, very energy efficient.
Yeah.
And these are Wi-Fi, so you can troll from your house if you want, if you think they're using too much electricity.
Well, a lot of pipe work to it, you know?
This comes everything complete, these units here.
Well, it must be a different unit.
Yeah, these here units, they come complete, that's why they call it a DIY kit. The lines come pressurized already, so all you do is hook it up, the lines, hook up the lines and put electricity to it, that's it.
I don't know if it's that easy, the guy took a day and a half to put mine there.
That's why these are the best ways to go.
Well-staffed.
These DIYs. That's why I gave you a lot more literature to read up on it, and you'll see.
Okay, maybe use the ARPA money for this one, you know? That's it, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor, before I recognize Counselor in seat three, I know when we spoke about the station on Eastern Ave having issues with their AC, the former chief had told us that whoever's in charge of each station puts a report together of anything that's wrong with the station, and it gets forwarded to maybe the deputy chief and then the chief. I'm sure that our fire chief can let us know what stations may or may not have working AC for the men and women. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Counselor in seat eight. She asked what the life expectancy was. You said there was a good warranty, but I, either I missed it or I'm not sure if you said what the actual life expectancy is.
Well, it's tough to say life expectancy on any appliance nowadays. I mean, I have refrigerators, three years old and it bit the dust. So, and it's a Samsung, it's, you know, it's a very high-end efficiency, good thing I got the extended warranty, but it's very tough, but these have a five-year warranty, I believe it is, on pots and labor. I think it's a seven-year or 10-year warranty, I believe it was. I'd have to go back and read it up again. Maybe it was a 10-year warranty on the compressor itself. So they do, very good warranty on them.
All right.
Not just on this unit, but a lot of these units, they have a good warranty on them.
That's it, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five?
Yeah, I was told the last 15 years. Because my daughter's, we're now putting the boiler in, or putting another unit in her other house. And I says, hey, how long do these last? She says, they last about 15 years. I says, I got a boiler, I had 26, 27 years, and no problem with it. Why should I have that? It only lasts 15 years. That's the way they make it today. They make it to last, you can buy another one in 15 years. I won't be around, so whatever.
I got a trained central AC, it's 22 years old, it's still working, but it eats up a lot of electricity.
I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there any more citizens' input?
We have one written citizen input. Dear members of the City Council, I'm writing you today with my concern of the horrendous verbal attack that happened at the City Council meeting on June 14, 2022. As a resident homeowner and an active voter, I feel the verbal attack on the city's Madam President by Counsel Brad Kilby was out of order, inappropriate, and not called for. The exact final words from Mr. Kilby's verbal attack were, "I've lost faith in your leadership." But the meeting before that, he made a statement to add to Counsel Pereira's comment about demeaning people and citizens' input. Counsel Pereira made a statement in the June 6 meeting... Councillor Pereira made a statement in the June 6 meeting before citizens' input that if any citizen starts to demean someone, that she hopes Madam President would hit her gavel and take control of the inappropriate comment. She also stated that we don't want our kids to bully and that goes for the adults as well. With that being said, Mr. Kilby added, "At times it gets embarrassing, it becomes defamation and personal attacks are made," and no name-calling, to which he adds after that, "He knows that Madam President will do the right thing." He even emphasizes, "She will." Moving forward to the June 14 meeting, Mr. Kilby does that exact same thing, but this time toward the city's Madam President. I feel Mr. Kilby needs to reevaluate his action towards City Council's Madam President and publicly apologize and resign. He's not fit to serve the citizens of Fall River with his hypocritical comments, radical behavior and outbursts. I also feel that Mr. Kamara needs to stop his bullying attacks on the city's Madam President as well. At every meeting, he must belittle the way she runs the meeting and the mind-reading comment is getting old. He mentioned at a previous meeting that he was uncomfortable talking about how many police officers goes to each school in a public forum, but he has no problem bullying a woman publicly for all to see. These two men seem to have an issue with the second and third highest position of the city being occupied by women. They have made it so obvious from the beginning. If I were to act or talk that way in a meeting with the mayor and/or city councillors, I know I would be escorted out and told never to return, but these two men continue to act this way at every meeting. I understand councillors need to agree to disagree on matters of the city, but these two men crossed the line with their consent verbal attacks on the city's Madam President. We all need to do better, especially these two men, if they care enough to get anything from, or get anything from this citizen input. I hope a change in behavior and an apology is made. I would also like to add this statement directly to Mr. Kilby, that if you come at me with she's a Cliff Ponti supporter comment, like you have two other citizens and therefore is why she wrote this, no, sir, you are wrong. I just pay attention to what goes on within my local government and where my tax dollars go all year long, not just during election time. Thank you, Lauren Simeo, 567 Smith Street.
Anything further, Madam Clerk?
No, Ms. Madam Clerk.
I'll make one comment. Now I feel bullied. Oh, God. I've been married 35 years, Joe, I think you've been married 30, right?
32.
32. 35 next week. First time I've been called a bully. I'll yield there. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, the resolution discussed funding for construction of storage area facility. This was back from, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, was there any further citizen input?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Storage area facility, this was tabled back in December of 2020. This was put in by former councillor Trotley. Whereas the city of Fall River is seeking to decrease and/or eliminate its spending on storage rental fees, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convened to discuss funding for the construction of a storage area facility. We have members of the administration, Mr. Denwee didn't, Mr. Aiken come down? Would you need a motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table made by councillor opposed, seconded by councillor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Then you opposed? So voted. I know that this is about decreasing storage fees, but this council has also spoken repeatedly on funding capital items and equipment and then it being left outside and has often asked for a storage facility during the budget hearings, or actually prior to the budget hearings, I believe we learned that we actually have some type of space building in boxes at DCM. I know councillor Pereira, unfortunately she's not here this evening, had mentioned that she wasn't sure if that is useful. I know she goes down there a lot, so I'm not sure what she's seen or hasn't seen, but I did hear Mr. Denwee say during the budget hearings that he would put it to use. So if we could speak on that and then if that's going to take care of any of the issues that we have with leasing facilities and our equipment being outside.
Well, good evening, Madam President and council members. We did find and locate the, it's a tent, a canopy, pretty much canopy, that was purchased back in 2016 from an auction, a large commercial auction in New Hampshire. In fact, one of, we recovered some more information on it just recently. One of the members, an employee actually went, that still works at the cemetery department, actually went to New Hampshire and picked it up at one of the auctions up there. We paid $3,000 for it at the time. And after it was purchased, they come to find out it would cost more than the purchase price to have it assembled by a vendor, a contractor. So it sat in the DCM complex all these years in those crates. One of the reasons they figured it would cost more than it was worth is it, would it serve the purpose to be a permanent structure? Maybe not. Would it be a supplementary structure to supplement storage? More than likely. It was mentioned that it could possibly be used better if it was used at the cemetery to store some of their material and that, you know, but for some reason or another, it was never assembled. At this point, we're contemplating whether we're going to have our concrete crew and some of our members assemble it. One of the problems we're having is where? Because of storage issues and because of lack of any empty space at the complex or anywhere else that we own, there just isn't any space. We have right now multiple vehicles stored in the back property. We're actively selling them at auction. In fact, we sold one of the old salters last week. One is about to be sold off this week and we're just continually posting them there with Ms. Martino. And so they're selling out. But we have no room. We have no room and we use Seaberry Street Storage for materials that we have, carts, seasonal items that we, Christmas decorations that we use in numerous places throughout the city, things that no longer are of use, that departments have, that they put there while they go on auction, things like that. What we really need is a permanent structure and funding for that. And to put a permanent structure up somewhere is finding the right location. And I think, and even in that, is maybe be putting the cart before the horse when you look at our facility. Maybe the facility is what we need with larger storage. So funding, that's what we need, find funding to put a facility up. So as for the structure itself, the tent, we do plan to, you know, erect that structure at some point when staffing allows, once we get the place to put it. And it'll be a supplementary structure. We could put, you know, outside items, carts in there. We could take the carts from somewhere that Seaberry Street structure, put it there. But as for items that can't be outside or can't have the, take the chance of them giving them being wet or damaged by the climate temperatures, would have to keep them inside of a firm structure.
So which is not to say that the canopy tent, whatever we're calling it, is useless. It's just upon investigation of its history and starting to unpack the thing, because it's in many, many different individual boxes and the frame and the cover and everything else like that has been stored away for quite a while. The conclusion that we're coming to is that it may not be as good of a solution as we had hoped when we first discovered that it existed. And the progress that we're making in auctioning off the vehicles that are down behind the Lewiston Street facility is a helpful first step, because that lot down there is actually a very good potential location for a space building, for some sort of metal space building where we could store things. But of course, before we do that, there are fire engines, ambulances and other DCM vehicles that have been deadlined and that have been allowed to sit for a number of years. They all have some value, either for scrap or for some sort of collector, but it's just a matter of getting them out there and we've been making quite a bit of good progress on that. So once we clear that out, obviously, that'll be a location that we didn't have before that I think could be really helpful, it's already paved.
Thank you. Councillor in seat five, councillor Pelletier.
Thank you. It really doesn't make sense to me that we're going to sell some of these vehicles because we've got no place to put them, to be honest with you. We had a deal on Bay Street, if some of my colleagues remembered, that we traded off for a piece of land and they build about 10, 12 houses there already. And then we got the land and they say we can't put anything on it because it's not right for that. And we end up giving this guy all the land and they give us the business. And I still can't believe it till today that we can't utilize that. But, you know, what, how much land do you have around the incinerator? What could you put up there?
So the two parcels that we'd be talking about, there is a small piece that would have to be cleaned and probably repaved.
Yes.
Between the sand, the sand shed and the old incinerator, there's a portion that, you know, you could probably put a decent-sized space building there, you could put maybe three to five trucks, full-size vehicles in that area. And then the space behind the incinerator, which is where the, these old deadlined vehicles are. And we're not selling vehicles because we have no place to put them. These vehicles have no value to the city. They.
These are almost obsolete?
They are totally obsolete and non-functional. So we're selling them to people that want to buy them either for scrap or for collector's value, somebody that just wants to put a fire engine in the backyard. And those people are out there. And that parcel is actually significantly larger. That could house a pretty decent-sized space building.
You know, I got somebody that talked to me today about the vehicles in the garage and they're all sweaty and wet and, you know, it just happened to tell me this today and here I am talking about this tonight. Would it be feasible to, you got a lot of, some of these stores, these big stores and they're closed, could we buy something like that with a parking lot? That probably would be cheaper and just turn it around, fix it up and park the trucks in there. Does that make any sense?
So I think the simple answer is that it depends, and I know that's a super lawyer answer and I apologize in advance for it. But the problem with a lot of the older buildings, right? First, you've got to find one that's available in Fall River, you know, because I can think of a number of those sort of abandoned-type, big-box-type stores. Not necessarily in the city, but, you know, even if you go to older buildings and mills and things like that, you know, you've got to deal with, you know, with any of the potential environmental issues that exist in those places. I mean, the old police station's a great example, right? You know, the environmental issues, you know, in that building is one of the greatest challenges to selling it and getting it redeveloped. I think you're going to have that challenge no matter what, if you're going to look to use that space for something where, you know, Fall River's city workers are going to be there, working on vehicles, storing vehicles, parking vehicles. You have to be looking out for their health and safety. That's always the first thing you look at. So I don't know if it's feasible. I think we'd have to look on a site-by-site basis.
So what are we doing? We looking for something?
So it is a priority, there's no question. I mean, we need storage and it would be better not to have to pay for storage. But I think that there's, it's one of those kind of dominoes things. There's a number of things that I feel like have to or can be resolved first before we have the space, you know, without having to buy a space, you know, the space we already own, before we have space clear that we can use and that we can build on. And I think that goes in conjunction with a much larger vision for, you know, what is the future of Lewiston Street? What do we want to do with that facility? You know, can we put money into upgrading that facility, making it safer and better? And then, you know, any of the past DEP orders that have to do with that facility, how would that affect our ability to make change and improvement at Lewiston Street? So I just feel like there's a lot of consideration. It's certainly not something we're ignoring, but there's just, there's so many other issues around it.
With the water department putting the building up, Stonehaven Road, and what kind of land they got left up there? They must have some land up there.
They may, I don't know the answer to that. I know that they're doing something up there, I don't know how much room they will have left when they're done.
Because, you know, they're buying properties here and there. Not that we want to take anything away from the watershed, but if they got room up there that's, I think we should look into it. They put the big building up there now. How much more land? I don't know, but maybe we could find out, maybe we could work something out. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor in seat one, councillor Cadim.
Thank you, Madam President. Just in terms of space and building, I think it was about two years ago that we had requested a feasibility study for the facility on Lewiston Street. Originally, it was just going to be the incinerator. Then I specifically requested that we put a complete feasibility study for a whole new building on that location. That also included a central fire station feasibility study, full feasibility study, plus the Stanley Street Fire Station with the potential of taking over the baseball field, asking the housing authority to allow us to erect the baseball field in front of their property so that we can expand Stanley Street Station. So that was, and I know that predates you, but that was two years ago, you know, and we haven't seen any of it on any of this stuff. And it's the same conversations that just kind of get recycled over and over again. So we're talking about space again. So I think you got support of the City Council. We just need to see feasibility studies for those three projects at least, at minimum. I think that's what the council had voted on, so I'd still support that. And I think Lewiston Street really needs to look at a true facility, complete facility for that, not just the incinerator portion, but the entire building, which would encompass, you know, garage, space buildings, things of that nature. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you make sure the city administrator has those requests for the feasibility studies that the council had sent?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
I actually just became aware of that request. I think it was a conversation with Mr. Olivera from EMS. We were talking about different places where they could have more ambulances and that, of course, led to a conversation about Stanley Street and I didn't know that the council had asked for that, but that came up and I think that's certainly, those three properties specifically are very important places for us to really understand what the possibilities are there. So I'll certainly look into that, work on that.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? See nothing? Thank you. We'll make sure that you get that.
Thank you very much.
Motion at table?
Motion at table.
Motion at table made by councillor proposal?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So voted. Item two is transfer, I'm sorry, item three is transfers and appropriations. Jenny Aiken?
So with regard to the requested transfers and appropriations, drawing your attention to, let's see. The first one is $50,000 from the fire salaries to the fire expenses. This is just to safeguard within the last week of the fiscal year, fire from some bills that expects it might have. Fire at this point has more money in their salary line than they have in their expense line, so we want to transfer the $50,000 from one to the other just to make sure that they have the money to pay the bills that they may have coming up in the next day or two prior to Friday and that we're able to end the year without having to scramble and look for a transfer. So this is a prophylactic measure, but I think it's going to be needed and I would ask that you approve it, subject of course to your questions.
Anything from the council on this one? See nothing? Thank you. And that's in full council. Item four is the mayor requesting approval of seven proposals from the Bristol County ARPA funding.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, I was just going to raise my hand off to you.
So you've seen most of these before and there were some certainly reasonable questions as to whether or not they fell into appropriate ARPA categories. So it seems to be the nature of my timing, a number of things happened while we were dealing with the budget and having budget meetings, including the mayor brought on an ARPA coordinator who started in the midst of the budget meetings using ARPA money. Her name is Kara Humm and she'll be at the next meeting to introduce herself to you all and I know she's met some of you. She's an attorney and her first job was to do a comprehensive study as to all of the requests that were made within meetings, public meetings, neighborhood meetings. as well as in surveys and anywhere else that we got any sort of formal suggestion. And then to differentiate those from suggestions that manifested into actual ARPA requests and proposals, and then how those were acted on and, and what the results of the proposals were, whether they were acted and funded in full or partially funded. That was distributed to all of you. I think you all have that. And the next step was then for Ms. Humm to take a look at all of the proposals out there and do a deep dive into the ARPA final rule and see if those proposals could be, in good faith, supported by ARPA categories. So, the proposals that we have before you tonight include body-worn cameras and tasers. As you know, there is a strong likelihood that body cameras are very much the way of the future. They create both accountability, and I would argue, protection for the police, as well as accountability and protection for the public. Body cameras are, are very much good for everyone, and most importantly, body cameras are most effective when they don't require a manual activation, can be manually activated, but would automatically activate upon somebody drawing their firearm or their taser. Well, tasers that are being used currently by the Fall River Police Department are not new enough in order to do that activation, and so the proposal here for 1.522 million dollars, which would come under categories 3.16, social determinants of health, community violence intervention, would give, would put a body camera on every police officer, so each body camera is tied to that police officer, so there's no record-keeping issue. There's, there's a, a perfect and consistent accountability between camera and officer, as well as supply those officers with tasers that work with the body cam, so if a taser is drawn, the body camera automatically activates. This includes the equipment, the maintenance, and the electronic storage of the information for a five-year period. So, I think, I mean, one could certainly argue that, you know, well, this is one-time money, it's only good for five years, but at the, at the, the end of the day, once the five years is up, the reality is that a lot of this equipment is gonna need to be updated from a technological standpoint, not a mechanical standpoint. So, five years is pretty much the expected, I don't want to say lifespan, but the, the best usable period for these, for these body cameras. This covers the entire five years and would make sure that our police officers have the absolute state-of-the-art, both tasers and body cameras in order to begin this with. Do you have any questions about that request?
Any on the body cameras? Councillor Kilby, you had your hand up, is it on the body cameras or just in general?
Just on all seven.
Go ahead.
I'll just give my input here. I, I spot these requests, just have questions-
Could you just speak into the microphone, Councillor? I just can't hear you. Thank you.
My comment's gonna be basically that most of these items, enough to all these items, are things that have been requested by the City Council in, over the last couple of years. I remember Council, former Council Trotley, resolution with regards to the body cameras. Someone recently sponsored a resolution with regard to, the, excuse me, the, well, that's the first one. Number two, the graffiti removal machine. We used to outsource that from the Sheriff's Department many, many times, and there was another resolution filed, I'm not sure recently who it was, I think it might have been Reposo with regard to that, and I see an uptake, uptake in the city with regards to graffiti. Pothole repair, Councillor Pelletier did a yearly, you know, his yearly pothole resolution many, many times. Street sweepers, I find seeing them around the city, they're very effective. Blue Water Project, the City Council's discussed that on many, many occasions, and we've also discussed the 9/11 dispatch communication center. So, I don't want to, you know, step ahead here. I know you're just on number one, Mr. Aikens, but on number five, the Body Sphere Discovery Center, I know it's, it seems, it's a, seems like, from what I read, a great educational piece.
I think it could be.
For, you know, for our forestry, our open land, our really un, I want to say untouched, but yeah, somewhat untouched, but unused recreational area for kids. So, if you can just embellish on that one for me, number five.
Certainly. So, this, as many of you probably know, was a farm. We are purchasing the property, which goes right up to the Watapa Reservoir as part of a way to protect that body of water, but at the same time, the existing barn and house could very easily be transformed into a discovery center for kids. We've talked a lot about different partnerships potentially with, you know, there's been, you know, whether, could it be a veterinary school? Could it be, you know, a, you know, an animal behavior program in any of the local colleges and universities? It could be any number of things where schoolkids from Fall River could come out to a beautiful, largely untouched piece of farmland right on the water and experience all sorts of outdoor, totally immersive learning opportunities. Those could include opportunities about animals and trees and plants that are indigenous to this area, as well as why the sort of overall protection of that area is critically important to our water supply and to, you know, everything we enjoy about, about Fall River in this part of Massachusetts. So, I think there's a lot of things that can come of that. The, the structures already exist. It would be a rehab of those. There are other grants and other monies that would be combined with the proposed ARPA money in order to do this, and so it would begin with the purchase of the land, and it would conclude with the development of this discovery center that I think would benefit both private and public schools across the city.
I agree. It's, it's such, like I said, is such an untapped area that I think a lot of our children will just, you know, be amazed, and, and these items, Mr. Aikens, that all seven, I think, touch upon quality of life issues, and making Fall River a better place to live, a more attractive place. So, you know, I'm a totally supporter of all seven. I yield with that, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councillor in seat three, Councillor Vice President.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I guess my, my, my biggest problem is the fact that the City Council is a body, has had no input, no discretion on any spending of ARPA funding. So, we had an initial thirty-four million dollars. You know, we even requested, could, you know, the administration come down when they had thoughts, present, you know, just keep the City Council informed as to what they were thinking. You know, the only thing we were told was as, as a body, we could make suggestions. I feel that suggestions have been made over time, and nothing has come of any of that. I know I have been pounding and pounding about infrastructure for sewer and water, which is something that would significantly help the city and help the taxpayers, to no avail. And this sixteen million is the only funding that we have any input or say on. I believe that there's still twelve million dollars left of the original thirty-four million in ARPA funding, based on the paperwork that was given to us not so long ago.
So, we've received the other thirty-five million, so I would, there's really probably total, close to fifty million, forty to fifty million. I don't have the exact number, but there's-
Well, I was, I was just talking about the original allocation, because the second, the second allocation hasn't come down for acceptance to the City Council yet.
Right.
So, that was only, yeah.
But in terms of availability, but you're absolutely right.
Almost fifty, all right, so almost fifty million dollars. Okay, that, actually, I'm, I'm in, I'm kind of glad you even said that. In terms of the body-worn cameras and compatible tasers, absolutely we need that. Absolutely, that should be funded. But the ARPA Committee unanimously voted to do that with the existing ARPA funding. So, to me, to take a million and a half out of sixteen million, when there's almost fifty million there, that money should be utilized for that. That's something that serves, that serves the city. That's something that helps the taxpayer, at least in the initial five years. So, I support the purpose. I don't support the funding source. I think that should come out of the other ARPA money. So, that would be the number one. Bio reserve, I have no problem with that one, supporting that from this funding source. The 911 dispatch communication system, I have no problem voting to agree to take that out of this funding source. Can you tell me what category the street sweepers fall under?
Sure. So, as you can see in the, in the write-up, and I have to give all the credit to Attorney Humm for her write-ups, we have category five, which is infrastructure, and it's 5.1 and 5.6, which is centralized wastewater treatment and stormwater. So, the way the street sweepers work, and I didn't realize this when I first presented this to the council, where, you know, as you recall, the purpose of that presentation was to invite the council to make whatever recommendations it would like to make, because as far as I believe the mayor's concerned and the city's concerned, it's, this sixteen million, the council can direct however it would like, because we want, we want that input. We think that's important. And just as an aside, I, I think the mayor really wanted, because he's very much in favor of body cameras, but he just wanted to create an opportunity for the council to be the body that actually supports the body cameras, because it just seemed like the right thing to do for the city. But that, that funding can come from either pocket, and I don't think it'll matter even a little bit. With regard to the street sweepers, a brush sweeper and a vacuum sweeper work in tandem. So, the brush sweeper breaks up the hard pack, salt, sand, debris, whether it's, you know, from roads breaking down, as they often do in the winter, from potholes and other things, to sticks and whatever else you find on the road. Over the course of the winter, that gets kind of packed in, and the sweeper itself breaks it up. The vacuum goes behind it, sucks it right up. And then the vacuum also is able to open up drainage, the, the drainage apparatus, the swales and culverts and, and all the different drainage systems that exist, the vacuum can actually go in there below grade and clean that stuff out, too. All of that together works to keep all of the debris on the road from running into our water supply, so it'll essentially reduce the contaminants in our water runoff. It'll, I think, ease our water treatment. It will limit the amount of contaminants going into the actual supply itself and ultimately keep less debris from being soaked, soaking into the ground, specifically chemicals and salt, and, and the results of automobiles and other kind of pollution that eventually does settle from them becoming part of the groundwater. So, the idea here is that the street sweepers working in tandem by keeping the streets clean do have a significant measurable effect on water.
Okay. So, basically, I guess what I was looking at was the category under which they would be purchased, which is infrastructure. I don't believe cleaning streets qualifies as infrastructure. I believe the ARPA funding was meant for future projects only. We couldn't use it for existing projects. For example, mandates from the government that we have to remove all lead piping in the city, which would be about a twenty-million-dollar project, that would be infrastructure. Street sweepers aren't infrastructure, and their, their, their purpose isn't infrastructure. So, my issue here is, I don't truly think that fits in an ARPA funding category as defined in the, in, from DLS. And again, every time the question came up in all the discussions we had in the past, we were always told, it has to be a new project, a future project. It can't be something that exists now, and it truly has to be infrastructure. So, I'm a little bit concerned whether that even fits the category. And I certainly don't want to approve something that isn't gonna fit and that some, they're gonna come back on us in regards to that. So, that one there, I, I, I can't support for those reasons. I'm not, and I don't even know, in terms of pothole and asphalt repair, graffiti machines, I don't know how, if those actually truly fit the ARPA funding categories. And basically with that, I yield.
Attorney Aiken, are you able to clarify, does Bristol County approve these prior to us purchasing anything?
They do. So, the way it works is, is actually gonna be very similar to the way the city money works, which is that if you, you put a, an application in that they don't feel complies exactly with what they were thinking, they'll come back and say, geez, you know, can you support this a little bit more? Can you add to this? Can you, you know, tweak this a little bit? It's not, you know, it's, it's really not a, a binary type analysis, you know, up or down, yes or no. There is give and take, and we've, you know, I, I know it's sort of easy to look at these things and imagine that we're just kind of, you know, throwing stuff out there, seeing what sticks, but in fact, there's actually quite a bit of research, quite a bit of work with the county to understand their process and, and also research what, what good supporting analysis would be for each of these projects that are before you tonight. So, I would respectfully disagree that, that they don't satisfy the, the categories. They, they do. And with regard to the way Bristol County does it, is they do have a panel that looks at these and considers the application. In addition to what's here, there's actually a fairly substantial application that gets submitted by, in this case, our ARPA coordinator. And then there's also a, an auditing firm that Bristol County has employed to take a look at all of this. So, they do employ a fairly stringent set of standards, but again, we're not gonna, you know, ask them to, to do anything that just has no good-faith basis of being approved.
So, I guess I was just asking you to clarify, would, would we be waiting on their approval before anything was purchased?
Oh, of course, yeah. I mean, we're not gonna spend money we don't have, so, so they have to give us the money to, I mean, the, the, giving us the money is, is part and parcel with the approval. So, yeah, we certainly won't purchase anything and couldn't purchase anything. That would be really irresponsible until this was approved and we had the money from the county.
Councillor in seat eight, Councillor Washington.
So, I just, I wanted to add to Counselors Kilby that I'm so excited for these seven to come down. So, I, I want to say that I've met with Kara on several occasions with questions, concerns that I have, on how does this fall? It's not my expertise, so I don't know the laws and regulations. She is the specialist, so that's what she does. She knows. And help me to understand what falls under that. These are, this is, this is, the citizens deserve this, in my opinion. We have been waiting for this money. When are we gonna get this opportunity to get a graffiti machine, to have extra sweet, street sweepers, I mean, body cams for our offices? I don't think anyone could deny that. Cleaner water? The explanation behind these things, once I sat with Kara and understood, because it doesn't make sense, how is, how does this fall under infrastructure? But again, that's her specialty. She understands those laws and regulations, that she does all the research, and helped me understand that. So, you know, I, I, I am excited to, to support these. I, I can't see how we cannot support all these things. The citizens of Fall River deserve this. That bio reserve, I, my children grew up going there. That is the most beautiful piece of property that the city has. For us to be able to regain that property and preserve that property and keep that property in the city of Fall River is such an opportunity. It is one of the most amazing opportunities, and if we can move forward with having some type of vet center down there, whatever, just to be able to own that property back in the city and preserve that is amazing. Just the citizens deserve to be able to have these things when we have the funding to just go ahead and approve it. And I, and I do, I do say, listen, I've, poor Kara, I've sat with her, I can't even tell you, and I, I come up with ideas all the time, and she will tell me, I will look that up, that's a little absurd, nope, that fits, that doesn't fit, but, I mean, that's, that's what we do. So, you know, my experience has been maybe different, I don't know, but, you know, I'm shouting out ideas all the time. I'm so excited that we are able to have this money, give ideas, and if, you know, I'm, I don't have a final say, but I, I, look, here's an idea. It's never been shot down, it's been looked at and said, you can't do that, but, you know, nice, keep going, or, you know, let's look into that. So, I just want to say, I am excited that we have this in front of us, that we have the ability to give something to our citizens. When are we gonna get this opportunity again? So, and, you know, I, I, I trust the opinion of her. I've sat with her quite a bit. Poor thing, I feel bad that she's had to listen to me and these ideas, but she's very knowledgeable, and with that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor in seat one, Councillor Kadeem.
Thank you. First of all, I commend you on the, the write-up. I think it was really, really well put together and very descriptive on what you were looking to do and how it kind of met the guidelines. The only, I guess the only issue I have, and I guess I disagree with my counselors, is item number five, the bio reserve discovery center. So, to me, I, I feel like that project is one that's perfect for CPA. So, when we start talking about community preservation, I think, you know, we should be putting, putting aside our- be putting, putting aside our community preservation monies for that and freeing up 1.3 million dollars for something else that could be used, whether it's infrastructure or something along the lines. Is there a reason why we haven't considered that? Just, just because when I start seeing the CPAs, CPA monies that we approve, it's a lot of private work that's being done? I'm sorry, I know, there's a, there's a lot of discussion going on that I can't even...
Counselors, I'm sorry, the rest of the council can't hear. Thank you.
I apologize.
It's okay.
So I know that prior to this being proposed as an ARPA expense, Mr. Ferland, who is, you know, the Director of Water and the person who's behind this particular project, had talked to CDA and also redevelopment and looked at a number of different options. I don't know what the reason is that this is, was not directed that way, and I can get that information for you.
Could you?
Sure. Yeah, I, I just wasn't part of the initial conversations because I think he was, he really wasn't considering ARPA as a, as an option.
Yeah.
For this. And then I think that there was just a conversation where the, the healthy childhood environments piece, you know, might be a perfect match, but I can certainly find out the reason.
Okay. Because that, that was the purchase of the property, right? Is that?
So there's the purchase of the property. I believe the property is, is about an $800,000 purchase, and there's other water monies that are, would be in, used in conjunction with the 365, and then the renovation itself is the $1 million.
Okay. So I mean, at least the purchase of the property, I think, we should consider the CPA. And, and I, I think some of the renovation, obviously depending on what type of renovation, renovation we're doing.
And I, I know that there is other monies being used for the purchase in conjunction with, with the money on, in ARPA. This may just be the balance, but I'll, I'll certainly find out.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Polo.
So a few things. On the graffiti removal, I've been kind of harping about that for a little while now, and I'm looking for my colleagues to support this. But I think it's important to know, and I've spoken to Attorney Aiken for a few, few times already, in regards to the ordinance that is going to need to be addressed to really handle this the right way. Because as you can see across the city, there is just so much graffiti, and I'm sick and tired of looking at it, and we need to handle it. But we also need to hold people accountable for when it's not being handled. So this is a good step forward. Obviously, the ordinance is going to have to be addressed. I know I put a resolution to handle that, so we're going to be working on that shortly. And on the street sweepers, I'll just add as well, and I've shared this with the administration, that it's nice to have nice shiny things, however, we're going to make sure we do it right. And I've gone back to my point of a street sweeper driving down the middle of Pleasant Street, I don't know, really know what it was sweeping, because we're not putting the signs out as we should have, we're not doing the process that it should be done. So I'm, I'm in full support of getting these, these items, however, we want to make sure that internally we're doing the right things to make sure it's done right. The last thing that I had was about the bio reserve. Is there a plan, it's like a plan of how they're going to go about this? So I recognize they're going to buy the property, they want to do the renovation, but do they have a plan as far as what they're going to put in it? What they're going to renovate? Anything further than what we have here on this?
I would characterize the plan as several parallel plans.
Okay.
So I think there's a number of possibilities. There is not a plan in terms of an architect that's actually talked about what the renovation would look like and, and what the exhibit and learning space would be. Right now, there are at least three to four different paths that I think are being pursued to see what's going to be the, the greatest effect and greatest sort of learning opportunity for, for kids, whether that's a partnership with a local college or university, whether it's a partnership with a nonprofit, what the focus of that would be, whether it's indigenous plants, animals and other things, whether it's animal rehab. So there's a lot of moving parts there that I know are being actively worked on. And I think the idea is that we know that we want to do something because this land is too good not to do something with. But what that something is, I think, is evolving.
Yeah, because I, I think, you know, the educator part of me loves this idea, but I want to see what are we going to get for what we're going to put into it? What, what exactly is the plan? From what we read here, it's great, and I, I love it. But what, what's really going to be in there? You know, there's a lot of community partners attached to this as well, so I would like to see more of a, maybe a presentation, and it's necessarily on you. I think it comes down to the Water Division, Community Utilities, to come down and say, this is what we're planning, these are the ideas, with your support of this funding, this is what we're going to do. I think I'd like to see that.
Would you be inclined to support the concept in order to make the application, knowing that there, as, as this, as this develops, there would be a presentation as to exactly what it's going to entail?
I think I would be inclined to do so, but I, I would like to see a plan more than, again, more than what we have here of where this is going to go. Because I think the other, the other part of this, too, once this is all set in stone, there has to be a further plan of how this facility is going to function.
Yes.
How is it going to operate? Who's going to staff it? How is it going to work with local schools? I think there's a lot more to be had on this than just buy the property, fix the building, now what?
Certainly.
So I think that's, that's all I'm looking for. Like I said, great concept, and it's just want to see a little bit more on it. That I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat two, Counsel Kamara.
Thank you, Madam President. Set quick question. Graffiti machine, pothole repair, asphalt, street sweepers, we hiring more people? We, what are we going to do with that, these machines? Are we going to be able to have them do what they're going to do on top of what they're doing right now? They're telling me they're working, doing more with less.
So there are some open positions, and we're posting those and hiring people for those.
And we're struggling to fill them.
We are struggling to fill them, there's no question about that. And, and as we, I think, all agreed during the budget conversations, the best way to do that is to be competitive in how we pay. And I will say that especially in DCM, the majority of those folks are Teamsters. We are actively in negotiation with Teamsters, and my interest is making sure that anyone in DCM is making, like my interest was in every other negotiation, is making a, a living wage that allows them to support their family, allows them to enjoy their work and look forward to coming to work every day. And, and that's something that's ongoing. So my hope is that it will be less difficult to fill those positions. But I agree that especially those three things that you mentioned, they obviously require the power of employees.
You get three sweet, you get three sweet sweepers, so just in those.
So some of these are going to replace existing things, all right? So we, we do have some aging fleet. So with regard to the, the pothole, which would allow us to do, essentially open up the street, do water projects year-round and be able to do a seamless patch that because of the, the infrared and the hot box has no seam. So it, and I know seamless means no seam, but it, it, it reduces any sort of water infiltration, which actually allows the road to stay in near-perfect condition much longer. It's an aesthetically better-looking patch.
I'm very familiar with that.
And so, you know, just, you know, for the benefit of everybody, I appreciate that. And so we have a hot box right now. This would, one of these would replace one of those. So it's not necessarily a total addition, it's an addition with some subtraction.
Well, I think the one that we have now, we don't use it enough.
That's right.
So we need to, two of them is, would be much better. My point is if we're going to do this stuff, we need to hire more people to, to make a significant impact in the community.
I agree.
People looking to get, if not just get machines, some of these I can see, and we've done it in the past, we bring the machine in, great, and now we don't have an operator, and it sits for four months.
It's true.
Then it goes out a couple of weeks, and then that person leaves, and now we have no operator. So it sits for another five months, and by the time you turn around, it's time to get another machine because this one, it's falling apart because it's not being used. You got to use these machines if you want to get effective out of them, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, the maintenance is even worse if they're not being used. There's no question about it.
Absolutely. They, they crumble.
I agree.
So I'm just curious, are we looking to hire additional people apart from more? Or was this part of what the budget was focused on with those positions that are vacant? Were they to satisfy this?
That, that was kind of the focus, is that we have the vacant positions, we believe we can fill the vacant positions, we believe that with the ongoing negotiations, we will be able to fill those positions. And because we're going to be replacing some apparatus, not just adding, we'll have the, the employees to do this work. And because of some of the seasonal nature of it, graffiti machine specifically, obviously that, that can have a maybe, you know, eight to nine-month application, but in the colder months where it's not going to be as effective to use a sand blasting, water blasting machine, could create a mess in a dangerous condition on the roadway. So we feel that we, we will have the employees to operate these things.
Okay. I don't mind supporting them, I just don't want them sitting there.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Collecting dust.
I don't either.
Not, not this dollar amount.
No, we got to be good stewards of what we're getting.
If we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's get the manpower to make sure that we can do it right and make a, a significant impact and improve this community.
Roger that.
I don't mind supporting that, I just don't want it to sit.
Thank you.
That I yield. Thank you.
Agreed 100%.
Thank you, Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment, just for clarification purposes. I don't want anybody to assume or think that my objections have anything to do with the acquisition of these things, or that I think anything is a bad idea. That has nothing to do with it. It's the pot of money it's coming out of. You know, I haven't yet heard anybody on this council who have come up with ideas that we can vote on to spend the county money, that that's the only monies that we, as a body, can make that determination. So maybe somebody has an idea, maybe a couple of people have ideas, and who knows how many millions of dollars those ideas would cost. For instance, if I said, I'd like to see $10 million go to the Water Department for real infrastructure for mandated projects from the government.
A second.
Well, guess what? We, if we spend this, we only have a million and a half left. But then, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at you. But the administration has 50 million. That's the point I'm trying to make. I'm not saying that things aren't good. I'm saying I want to utilize the money we have jurisdiction over to the best of our ability because we still are sitting on another $50 million. And I just wanted to say that for clarification purposes.
May I respond briefly?
Absolutely.
So just, just for whoever's watching and, and the record, there is, there already has been eight and a half million dollars of, of ARPA money designated for water projects. I think up until maybe this week, there was the belief that there was another significant amount of money just for lead abatement. There's some question as to whether that's going to come from the state. If it doesn't, that's certainly a priority, there's no question about it. Another great use of ARPA. I know that Mr. Ferland did come down here, and I appreciate his desire to, to, you know, take as much as you're, as you're willing to give him to do work with, and said that they have the capacity to do, you know, $100 million in ARPA work. But the reality is that in order to spend this money and actually have it spent, because there was some question as to whether the, the December 31st, 2026 deadline was, it has to be spent or has to be committed, and then the work can finish up.
It has to be spent.
It really, does have to be spent, yeah.
That's right.
And so the idea that, you know, we take $40 million total, county and city together and give it all to water, is an amazing idea as long as we can spend, as long as the work's going to get done. And the, the possibility that there isn't capacity to do all that work, whether contractors, people in the Water Department, all of that stuff, we would just need to be sure. And, and so I am fully in support of, of that kind of infrastructure work because, you know, Lord knows, you know, the city, you know, needs that and many other things. You know, we want the quality of life and the experience of living here to be as good as it possibly can be. I do believe these are part of that, but I also believe that, that there's certainly room to add to the water thing, but maybe not at the scale that everyone thinks, because at the end of the day, they just need to be able to do the work.
May I respond to that?
Certainly.
So in terms of the lead project, that, the mandate, that would be completed by December 31st of 2026 because the mandate drives that. It's been mandated that it has to be done prior to the, to December 31st of 2026, and it is a $20 million project. Obviously, the city would otherwise have to bond 20 mil, another $20 million that the taxpayers would have to pay, that the water and sewer rates will continue to go up because we have to pay down the bonds. If $20 million of ARPA funding were dedicated to that mandate instead, that would affect future rates for the taxpayers. The water and sewer rates wouldn't have to go up to cover another $20 million bond. And yes, that does fall within the timeframe. In terms of the $8.7 million, ARPA funding did not allow for sidewalk repair. However, the $8.7 million in water projects just happened to be where sidewalks would be affected, and therefore the monies could be used to repair the sidewalks as part of the water project, just to be fair. And again, not mandated projects. And yes, we've had many pots of money, and we've had money coming in, grants coming in from all angles. You know, and again, to say, you know, we're waiting for the state, maybe the state's going to pick up the bill, maybe they're going to pick up part of the bill. I don't know. I, I, I just, I, I just have to, I, I can't give up that fight, especially knowing there are projects that are future projects that completely qualify, that will have, help this city, that will help the taxpayers, and they're within the timeframe that has been set forth by the government. And that's, that's just where I'm coming from, and, and I, I just can't stop fighting that fight. I do have one more question on ARPA funding, and I'm not even sure if I, if, it's kind of, it's way off track, it has nothing to do with here, but it's just the fact that we're discussing ARPA funding. $3,000 bonuses, premium pay, is that coming with ARPA funding? Because I didn't see in the language that ARPA funding was brought into that, to that.
So there is a category of ARPA funding called premium pay. So it's, it's not, it's not lost revenue, it's premium pay. There are guidelines as to who can get premium pay, and there's a minimum number of hours that one would have to work between March, I believe, 20th of 2020 and March 20th of 2021. The mayor did make a statement the other day that was published in the newspaper, I believe Ms. Good was the writer regarding what his intentions were with regard to premium pay. And I think he was looking for a certain amount of money to be paid to firefighters, EMS, first responders, first responders and the people that were supporting first responders for ARP, for using ARPA money, premium pay. And then the balance of employees, City Hall, would have another level of premium pay for their coming into work. And so at this point, one of the sort of challenging parts to, to the accounting of that is, you got to figure out who was actually here, who was working, who wasn't, you know, who was left since and all that sort of thing. So we're in the midst of doing that. I think what had happened is that the premium pay provision did make its way into the Superior's contract, and it was never our intention not to do it. It was just, you know, the timing. You know, we wanted to just kind of get a sense of, of, you know, where the, you know, when we're going to do it, you know, who is going to get paid, how much it was going to be, and all that sort of thing. And, and that's been a little bit of a moving target because obviously you have to verify who was here. So that's something we're, that's ongoing, it's something we intend to do. It'll be sooner rather than later.
Okay.
So.
Part of the reason I asked that question is, yes, with premium pay, the people actually had to work, had to be on-site, not remotely or anything else. And you're right, it was, it was in, in the agreement, and this is where my concern came in. So in recognition and appreciation of the work performed and health risks incurred by unit members during the pandemic, the city will remit a one-time payment to each member of the bargaining unit in the amount of $3,000 payable in the payroll following funding of this MOA by the city. This shall be paid, shall, to any member of the unit who was a member any time between March 10th through the funding of this agreement. Correct me, please, if I'm wrong, but when I see that, that tells me whether you are on work is comp, comp time, you're getting $3,000 because you're a member of the unit, period. So if that's the case, we're going to have people who don't fall, again, under ARPA. It's that they, they don't, they're not entitled to the premium pay, so the city is on the hook for anybody who doesn't fall within the parameters of ARPA again. Would that be a correct statement?
So the problem is, if I say yes to that, right, if I say you read that correctly, right, I don't want the public to be misled and believe that we in fact are going to be paying people that didn't work, because that's just not true. That's not what's happening. Now, we do know that in that bargaining unit, which is a quarter of the Police Department, Superior's, right, there would actually be nobody that wouldn't qualify for premium pay. So all, so deputy chiefs are not in that bargaining unit. So this is captains, lieutenant sergeants, and there's actually nobody that didn't work at least 250 days, I'm sorry, the 250 hours during the, the period, and that's actually the minimum number. So it's about a six-week amount of work during the 52-week period that's identified in ARPA. And so... And so, I suppose, I, you know, there's probably a, a public appetite for, hey, you had to work the whole time. But, you know, the ARPA guidelines came out, and they were 250 hours. So, we didn't choose to try to modify that, or try to play with that, or do anything with it. We said, "All right, if you qualify, you qualify," and everyone in that bargaining unit qualifies. I will say, the language is not in any of the other agreements, because our position is that every single other bargaining unit, except for janitors, or law, there's two of them, right, every single other bargaining unit was just too big in order to make that determination. So in this particular one, everyone would qualify because they did the 250. And there is nobody that would be getting paid that has absolutely no right to. In all the other units, there would be exceptions, there'd be issues, there'd be things we'd have to, to figure out. So that language is not going to be in any other collective bargaining agreements.
So moving forward, we should be anticipating some type of transfer, or some type, something coming down in relation to ARPA funding, funding this?
Yes, once, so we'd like to do it all at once, I don't want to do it piecemeal. So what I'd like to do is, is, you know, once we settle all the contracts, which should be, hopefully, somewhat soon, do a single payment to everybody, all on the same date. I think it would be concerning to some folks to feel like, you know, this group just got theirs, and when do we get ours, and, you know. I, I would like it to happen all at the same time, so everyone feels a certain level of equity there.
Okay.
Can I just get a point of information on that?
Yes, Counselor.
So the language is silent on ARPA, so you can get the funding source from anywhere.
That is true.
Right, so I, I just want to make sure that, that's out there, it does not necessarily have to come from ARPA.
That's true.
Could be just coming from funding of the contract.
It could come from the 2.6 million in the reserve fund.
Right, okay.
And that was going to be my next question, so.
Right, but the intent is ARPA, the intent is ARPA premium pay.
Okay, thank you, that I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington.
So I just want to say, in my very long four-week tenure here on the council, I have had ideas, and, you know, to bring them forward, and I think this is just for all of my colleagues, you don't want to bring ideas forward without even knowing with this ARPA funding, if it can't even be used for that. I'm sure I'm not the only one with, you know, ideas that will unify the city, or, or be a great idea for the city, but you, there is a process, and I recommend that people sit with Kara, the ARPA director, and find out if what your idea is can be used. It's not like she doesn't, she doesn't have all the answers right there, it's a lot of research that goes into it to find out what can be used. What we have before us is a lot of research that went into us to find out if the funds can be used for this. So, you better believe I'll be calling tomorrow to see if Mr. Barlow, who spoke this morning, if we have funds to fund the fire department to have guys with ACs in their bedrooms, I mean, it's crazy. I don't know the answers to that, but she will find it. So, I mean, I think that's the route to go. We don't have final say in everything, but we do have a say. Here's an idea, go research, find out if we can do it, and then we'll present it. There is, I mean, I've only been here four weeks, but I can't tell you, I, ideas are coming, I know, I can't be the only one getting constituent calls of, "Idea's how to use this money." We have ideas in front of us, they have been brought through the law department, or Kara is a, an attorney, so that's what I'm just saying. So, I haven't sent any ideas down, because the ideas I have may be outlandish, they may be great in my head, but they, they can't be used through ARPA funding, so. But I, I do recommend that, that people sit with the ARPA director, who, her sole purpose is to research funding for ARPA money, so our citizens can use it. Thank you, I yield.
I can speak to AC real quick, if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
Sure. So, the president of the, of the firefighters' union, who's a really wonderful advocate for his, his people, has asked about this, this is something we're already looking into. There is a ventilation provision in ARPA, that you can use money for ventilation. The thing I'm trying to figure out, the thing Kara's trying to figure out, is if the ventilation piece is, has to be an installed sort of infrastructure project, or whether it can be something that's temporary, like these mini splits. Because, you know, if we could, I'd, I'd, you know, spend the money right now and get them AC. But if we can do it with ARP and have it be a little more permanent, I'd love to do that. So that's something we're looking at, we're serious about it, I think it's important. A lot of people don't know that the Niagara Candaeus Fire Station, when it was built just before it was completed, actually had much of the whole ventilation system and, and driver, you know, whatever the engine would be in the basement that would drive the ventilation system, removed, doesn't exist. So there's chases and, and stuff throughout that, that entire building that are, that have nothing going through them or to them, and that place just bakes. And that, you can say the same, or tell somewhat similar stories about a lot of the stations. It's incredibly important, and I would love it if the council made that suggestion as a, as a ARPA proposal. And I think we can support it, but I'll know in the next day or two.
Yeah, thank you, I mean, and I just want to say to that, I think that just the general public wouldn't even know that the fire department is sleeping with window ACs in there, you know, so just another example of, hey, here's an idea, can you find out if we can use it? If not, where can we get the money from? But if ARPA can be used, let's get these guys something immediately. And that's why I had asked earlier to Mr. Barlow, if, what's the life expectancy? Because is there something better we can do for, for these men and women? I yield, thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor, you are correct, people, some counselors, myself included, have sent their ideas to the administration. I know that they have them, and they're working on them, but anybody is welcome to do so. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Repouzou.
Yeah, real quick question, is there any plans for any more public ARPA meetings?
There are no plans currently for public ARPA meetings.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, anything further, Counselor in seat five?
Hello, sir, how are you? I know you didn't, always watching.
Yeah, I know. Listen, the seven projects I did, they're all good, they're all good. And how does this work now? We're going to spend 4.5, asking the Bristol County to fund this, is that the way it goes?
Yes, sir.
And then that means we got left how much?
Well, so it's, it's about 15 and a half million, it's not quite 16. So you'd have about 11 million left.
That's what I thought. I took a ribbon to it. Now, that goes in, how long does it take before they decide whether or not they want to get the money up?
Four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks. And then we can move on this?
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. You know, we, and they're right, we've always talked about just about everything on this. And the one, I mean, it's all important, but the Blue Water project, it's like, we talked about it, they said across about a quarter of a million, and put Southwater Pond, and it comes clean. I'd be able to go swimming. It's fantastic what, what they got these days. But like I told the mayor, we have to find out where the waste is coming from the houses, from Westport, Infall River, and that certainly should be done before doing this project. But as the mayor said, they're going to run something up Route 6 and try to connect everything in Westport. How long is that going to take?
I don't know the answer to that.
You know, so, so what do we do? Do we move on it, or not?
Well, I believe, and this is, I don't want to get too much into the science, because I'm not a, not a scientist, but I believe part of the treatment does suppress the algae down at the bottom, and I believe some of the research suggests that the algae itself is largely generated by leaves and other organic debris, as opposed to inorganic or, or human-made debris. So I'm, I'm not necessarily sure exactly how this solution works, or, or whether or not the, the pipeline that the mayor was talking about is, is the, also works in conjunction with that. I don't, I don't know enough about it to, to know, but I, I believe it at least suppresses the algae kind of at the bottom, so it's not making the water toxic, and it, and then can be treated, so.
Okay, I'll get my bathing suit ready. So when, when we get this done, and we spend the other 11, 2, or whatever it is, what say do we have on the other 50 million?
None.
No.
Nothing?
No, sir.
So who decides that?
Well, there are, there is a member of the city council on the ARPA committee. So the city ARPA committee meets every several weeks, they look at proposals. And so that committee does have a member of the city council, and the say would be, the committee, obviously the mayor is, is chair of that committee. It's more of an advisory committee, but the, in the interest of transparency, the committee votes, and those proposals are then sent through the application process.
So we have no role at the council?
You do, you have a vote, you, the, the whole council doesn't vote, but one counselor votes as part of the committee. And I think the, the legal opinion, I believe this is from Attorney Rumsey, this is before my time, but the legal opinion was that the administration is not obligated to seek the approval of the council to spend the ARPA money. But I think in the interest of fairness and transparency, the mayor put together the advisory committee. So it's not a, it's not a public, you know, committee or board.
I don't think it's right, I think we should have also the final say. You can say what you want, we got nine counselors, and we have a job to do.
I understand.
And you're just eliminating us from the 50, 50 million, hey, we'll take care of 50, we'll give you 16 million, you do what you want with that, and then we'll take care of the 50, I don't think that's right.
Thank you.
So that's only what I get to say anyway. With that, I yield.
Thank you, anything further?
Yes.
From the council, Counselor in seat four.
Just one question popped in my head, the, the body warm cameras. Is that going to bring us to full capacity on the police department? I spoke with the chief, and I think, I may be wrong, but he said it'd be more like 3 million or whatever, but is that? I may be wrong with the figure, but is this appropriation here going to outfit our entire police department with, with the cameras?
This will outfit everybody, and it actually has two refreshes during the five years, where we'll get brand-new equipment throughout. And so I think there's an opportunity there to make sure that, if there's additional police officers, if they're more up to full complement, we can make sure that they're outfitted as well. But right now, I believe it would outfit everyone.
Very good, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, anything further? Saying nothing, thank you, Mr. Aiken.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion.
Second.
Motion adjourned, made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Kilby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Finance is adjourned, take a two-minute recess. Fall River City Council now come, come to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeen.
Here.
Kamara.
Here.
Deon.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Pereira. Repouzou.
Yep.
Washington.
Here.
And President La Liberty LeBeau.
Here. If everyone in the chamber would please rise, rise for a moment of silent prayer. Remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first items before you are appointments to the newly formed Historical Commission. The first is for Kristen Cantara Olivera.
Motion confirmed.
Second.
Motion confirmed, made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Repouzou, any discussion? Counselor in seat five.
Yeah, there was a, I got a call that, that address they used wasn't right, and said Aikens was checking it out. Olivera girl.
I'm Kristen Olivera.
Whether the address was right, you were supposed to be checking it out. Whether the address was right, you were supposed to be checking it out.
I apologize, Counselor. Which one?
Historic Commission.
Historic Commission, Kristen Olivera. It says Shavison Street. Sheila Van Robson.
I don't have an answer to that yet. I apologize. I didn't hear the first part of it. I'm sorry. I'm totally out of words. Should I come down? No.
Well, the thing is, we talked about it and you were going to check on it.
I did. I asked. I don't have an answer yet. I'm sorry.
Counselor, I can confirm it with her tomorrow.
Yeah, and then there was a, I think said that she got installed maybe a week ago. We're doing this tonight. Tonight's the night that we vote for it, right?
Right.
So that's it.
Correct.
Okay.
So the two boards merged, the Historic Commission and the Historic District Commission. It's been ongoing for at least a year, if not two. So all of these members, with the exception of one, were on one of those two boards and wanted to continue on.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you just confirm her correct address tomorrow? I will. Thank you. So we have a motion to confirm. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Counselor in seat three?
Yeah, can we make a motion to just take B, C, and D all together?
Second.
Motion to take items one, B, C, and D together after a reading's been made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk?
Sure. B, C, and D would be the appointments of Richard Mancini, Maria Connie Sewell, and Elizabeth A. Dublock.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion confirmed made by Councilor Reposo, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item two would be the mayor's communication and orders authorizing the appointments of the seats on the same Historical Commission. These seats would be appointments of the city council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Councilor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Washington. Any discussion? Counselor in seat five.
How many people on this board?
Seven.
It would be seven.
And three counselors?
No, no, no.
No, no, those are our appointments. The council appoints three and the mayor appoints four.
Oh, okay, okay. I get, thank you.
So these would be the appointments of Ruben Amaral, Joyce Rodricks, and Jason Bouchard Naraki.
So we have a motion to adopt made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number three is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Scott Alves as a member of the Sewer Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to confirm made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number four is the mayor's request for the approval of the proposals for the Bristol County ARPA funding.
Motion to approve.
Counselor in seat one.
Could we just remove item number five, just table until we get an answer on the Community Preservation Act monies?
Second.
So we want to take these, can we take these individually, Madam Clerk?
Sure.
We'll take them individually. That will, is that what you were going to ask for, Counsel?
Yes.
Anything further? Madam Clerk, will you take them individually?
Sure.
Do you want a roll call on them?
Nope, if you just take each of the seven items.
So the first would be for body worn cameras and compatible tasers in the amount of 1,522,877 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat three opposed.
Item two would be for graffiti removal machine in the amount of 75,400 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilor Reposo, seconded by Councilor Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Seat three opposed.
Item three for a pothole and asphalt repair, 122,568 dollars.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat three opposed.
Item four would be for street sweepers in the amount of 950,000 dollars.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Councilor Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Seat three opposed.
Item five would be for the BioReserve Discovery Center in the amount of 1,365,000 dollars.
Motion to table.
Motion to table made by Councilor Kadeem.
Point of information, Mayor. What's the purpose of tabling? I didn't pick that up.
Counselor, seat one.
So I think this, I think all of the 1.3 million would be eligible for Community Preservation Act monies for preservation. So I think it would just free up some additional monies for the ARPA to be used. So I'm just waiting for the administrator to come back saying whether or not it's eligible or not eligible.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two?
Yeah, no, I disagree with my colleague in seat one. I think that it's, it would be a better use to use if we didn't have to take it from the ARPA money. We free up ARPA money to do other things and it could come from community preservation. With that, Ayew, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to table made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Kamara. Any other discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Voted.
Item six would be the Blue Water Project in the amount of 241,275 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved made by Councilor Reposo, seconded by Councilor Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
And item seven would be for the 911 dispatch communication system in the amount of 305,000 dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Councilor Reposo, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number five is a communication from the mayor and a request from Sanford Spinning Mills LLC at 206 Globe Mills Ave to amend the waterfront downtown HD zone to include Globe Mills Avenue and surrounding areas.
Motion to refer to planning board? Second.
Motion to refer to planning board made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item six is the mayor's request in conjunction with the fire department to accept periodic donations of smoke and CO detectors, fire extinguishers, cleaning supplies, and other like materials from Amazon.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item seven is the mayor's request in conjunction with the fire chief again in the order accepting gift of two natural gas meters and calibration kits for the fire department command vehicle cars two and three from Liberty Utilities.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Councilor Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item eight is the mayor's communication in an order establishing a career vocational technical education revolving fund for Durfee High School with a spending limit in the amount of 200,000 dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item nine is the transfer order. Let me see. Got the sum of 50,000 dollars be in the same as hereby transferred to the fire expenses from fire salaries.
To adopt.
In the amount of 50,000 dollars.
Motion adopted made by Councilor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 10 is the mayor's communication in an order scheduling a special municipal election on November 8th to designate the city of Fall River an MBTA district relative to South Coast Rail. Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Council Washington.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Any discussion? Counselor in seat five.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I see we can vote by mail this year, September, Massachusetts?
We do have the elections office here. Would you like to have them come down?
Yeah, just to answer the question, I guess it's something new, I guess.
You have a motion to waive the rules?
No, motion to waive the rules made by Council Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Well, I haven't heard too much other than the TV saying you can vote either way, you can vote by mail, and we haven't heard nothing from your office. So I'd like, you know, give us an idea what's going on. And that's it.
Okay. Well, Governor Baker just signed the Votes Act into law on June 22nd, which allows for no excuse vote by mail. It's comparable to what the Commonwealth added in 2020 during all three of the state elections. It just makes that permanent. So if you're interested in voting by mail, just contact our office so we can send you the vote by mail application.
All right. So we expect more people voting?
I'm hoping. We had a turnout, well, it's different because we had a turnout in 2020 of about 62%. It was about 36,000 residents who voted, about 16,000 elected to vote by mail. I don't expect anywhere near that for a state, for a midterm state election.
How many voters are getting on Fall River? Big influx of people coming in?
Approximately, um, approximately, as of today, it was 54,523.
What was last year?
It was probably about 51,000.
Wow. Those are all new residents?
Um, most likely.
Yeah, okay. Ayew.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven.
Mr. Lyons, in reference to the special election, what are the effects if it fails?
I don't know the answer to that. I just found out about this referendum question from Attorney Rumsey on the end of April. All I know is that a decision has to be made by the public. If the citizens reject it, I'm not sure what the end effect to that might be.
The city administrator?
Mr. Aiken?
Mr. Aiken?
So we were just talking about this before the meeting started and that was kind of the question, what happens if this fails and the people voted down either because they don't understand it or just don't want it. And so I was trying to do a little research to see if I could find the answer to the question. I don't know the answer, but it does seem like that this is a necessary membership in order for us to have the benefit of the train coming to the station that's being built as we speak. So I think the potential outcome would be a train station with no train.
So we have the trainless station.
Unfortunately. I'm sorry.
We have the trainless station.
It would be the trainless station.
Just to be clear, this, this special election would take place in conjunction with the state election?
Correct. It would be simultaneously with November's general election.
Two separate ballots, though?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, did you ever hand up?
I did. So getting back to the trainless station. Just my colleague in seat five, he brought up a very important question about voting by mail. What is, just, I don't want to go on too much because you know, we're getting away from here now, but what is the deadline that people can request to vote by mail? Because you have to, they have to make a request, you send them a form, they fill out the form, send it back to you. So what is the deadline? Two weeks prior to the election, one week?
To request the application, it's now five days before election.
Five days before the election?
Correct.
And that'll give you?
That's actually, I want to correct, that it's five business days. So the weekends would be excluded, so technically be the Tuesday before the election.
So someone puts in a request with you, you don't send them the ballot, you send them a form to fill out?
Yes.
So they have to mail it back to you?
Yes.
And then you get that form, you open it, and you send them the ballot. And that's going to happen within five business days?
Well, they have to submit the application to us within five business days of election in order for us to send them a vote by mail ballot.
Okay, so if it's four days prior to the election, then it's not going to happen. And how do you keep track? How do you monitor who you send ballots out to?
Well, we have to process the application into the Commonwealth VRIS system. So we know we have a list that's printed of people who elect to vote by mail. We print out the labels and we put them.
And when you send them the ballot, do you record it as a ballot being sent out?
Oh, yes. It's already marked up on.
So the chance of someone getting two ballots?
It wouldn't happen.
Wouldn't happen? Has it happened in the past?
Um, it has happened in the past because we had in 2020, unfortunately, when they had put it through, I think during the pandemic, there were people who had submitted absentee ballot applications as well as the vote by mail applications. Because of the duplication and error, two ballots were sent to registered voters.
I know, three ballots were sent to one individual.
Okay. Not aware of that at the moment.
All right, just curious. With that, Ayew, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one?
Thank you. So it seems like we're a little delayed. Is there, I guess there a reason? Has the state not notified us that we had to adopt this? Or, I mean, I would have thought we would have adopted prior to them constructing a facility over on the Wall Street.
That was kind of the mix.
Yes.
The most common sense.
Okay.
Yes. This is one of those things where it does feel like the train has left the station, literally, and we're just asking. I think this, this was discovered late in the game by Attorney Rumsey and he notified us and we put it forward.
That was deep rooted.
I'm glad you remembered. That means a lot. Thank you.
So, so in terms of the general election, so there's going to be two separate ballots. There's going to be a municipal ballot and then a state ballot?
Correct.
In November. Okay. All right, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? The motion to adopt's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you, John. All set. Madam Clerk?
Have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances?
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Kamara, seconded by Council Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 12 is the order granting permission to Denelson DeFradis Januario to operate as a junk collector and operate and maintain a secondhand article store at 889 Grinnell Street. I also wanted to mention that the police chief did recommend denial of this license.
Motion, grant leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion, grant leave to withdraw made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Kadeem. Fortunately, there's no discussion on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Can I just get a clarification? Madam Clerk, you said secondhand article store, but it was supposed to be for an office only if, if you was going to anything. Is that the same?
His application was for a secondhand article store.
Okay, but he was never going to get a secondhand article store. He was only going to get an office at best. Still doesn't belong there, which is fine. Thank you.
That is what his application was for. Item 13 was the order to grant permission for Jonathan Manchester. As I said at the public hearing, this was the, the advertisement that was incorrect. So I would suggest that this also be granted.
Motion, grant leave to withdraw.
Motion, grant leave to withdraw made by Council Dion, seconded by Council Reposo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 14 is the order designating the polling places for the special election of November 8th.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 15 is the, is an order granting the renewal of auto body shop license at 1033 Pleasant Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 16 is an order granting permission for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 17 is a claim.
Motion to forward a corporation counsel.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 18 is a drain layer application for JDQ Excavating.
Motion to adopt.
Motion approved made by Council Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Council Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
We have minutes of the zoning board meeting of April 21st.
Motion to accept, place on file. Second.
Motion accepted, place on file made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Motion to take item 20 to 23 together.
Second.
Motion to take items 20 through 23 together after reading made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk?
Those minutes would be public hearings held on May 31st and June 14th. Committee on Finance held on June 6th, and special meeting of the city council held on June 6th.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item 24 is a communication from the Disabled American Veterans, William S. Green, Chapter 9, indicating the September 23rd Celebration Dinner, celebrating 100 years of empowering veterans.
Motion to accept, place on file. Second.
Motion accepted, place on file made by Council Kadeem. Motion accepted and placed on file made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
And we also have the matter that was received after the agenda was prepared, communication from the mayor and the orders of taking for the MBTA South Coast Rail program off-site traffic mitigation improvements at the intersection of President Ave. and North Main Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopted made by Council Kadeem?
Second.
Seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilor adjourned.